Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with
Will the clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Grumney, absent. Commissioner Lund.
Here.
Chair Reynolds.
Here.
Now is the time for public comments and I don't have any cards, so we'll continue on for written comments, announcements, continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a supplemental packet for the commission's consideration and for the public's review and the applicant's review, which is available at the front counter. The supplemental packet for this evening contains certain proposed revisions to conditions for the proposed project from both community development and public works. It also includes a letter from the attorney representing the applicant. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case TTMJ 2007 70142 and HPMJ 2007 70289, continued from the Planning Commission Meeting of 2/11/08. Applicant: Morning Star Development. Request to allow the re-subdivision of approved Vesting Tentative Tract 5465 into 10 lots of record and to modify the approved Hillside Plan Development Permit to allow construction of nine single-family dwellings. Location: 3205 Morning Star Avenue. Recommendation: Approved with conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd, would you like to give the report?
Yes, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Get the start there. There we go. Okay. We have a PowerPoint presentation tonight for the project staff report. The applicant's request is for modifications for an approved tract map and HPD permit. The request is to approve, modify the approved Vesting Tentative Tract and Hillside Plan Development to subdivide 19.98 acres from a nine-lot approved subdivision to a 10-lot subdivision and to allow the construction of two additional single-family dwellings to the seven previously approved. We have an aerial view of the site for tonight's hearing. It's along Olson Road, on the south side of Olson Road. Access to the parcel is actually up Morning Star Drive, which is off to the right of this picture there along Olson Road. It will modify the width of Morning Star and the full width of the street requirements. And the development, current development, also includes the expansion or extension of Virgo Court as a second cul-de-sac that will come off to the west. The existing Virgo Court is shown in this aerial photo. And development will include seven units around the extension of the cul-de-sac and two additional lots being proposed behind the existing residential area on Virgo Court. This is a site photograph taken from the area of lots eight and nine on the, well, behind the units there on Virgo Court. The rooftops you see in the photo are from Virgo Court. The current approved project, which was approved as Tract 5465, is for a nine-lot subdivision with seven residential lots to the west of Morning Star Avenue near Olson Road. There's one homeowner association fuel modification parcel and one open space lot to be dedicated to the city. The applications, the modification applications filed were to modify the design to increase the project to a 10-lot subdivision, to increase the residential lots from seven to nine, virtually by adding the two additional lots, lots eight and nine, behind the existing units on Virgo Court. The applicants are requesting to merge the fuel modification zone into the three proposed residential lots on the south side of the development. And one lot again would be for an open space lot to be dedicated to the city. We have a site plan of the project site. For clarity, we utilized a map of the cross-sections there to show clearly where these lots are being proposed. The lots along Olson Road that are identified with a 1 are split-level units that would face onto Virgo Court and back onto Olson Road, similar to the current approved project on the site, which are also approved for split-level units to work with the terrain modification that the HPD zone requires. Three lots, the remaining three lots in the seven in the original designed area are shown as number twos. Those are two-story units being proposed. And then lots eight and nine, which are on the south side of the existing units on Virgo Court, are the footprints identified as threes with an access driveway coming up along the side of Unit 7, which is that one lot right there at the intersection of Morning Star and Virgo Court, and then running behind the units there on Virgo Court to serve the two other lots, eight and nine. The little bit of a project history on the site. This site was first approved through a tentative map 4659 for a lot configuration similar to what you see here tonight. That was back in 1990. At the same hearing, the tract map for the 12 lots on Virgo Court were also approved. At the time, the consideration was to actually build and construct both tract areas together because of the access issues on Morning Star Avenue and shared grading directions, cut and fills between the two parcels, the two subdivisions. However, there were separate applications, separate applicants on both sites. And the tract area that we're looking at tonight actually expired out while the other tract went forward with construction. One more recent history, in 2005, a re-application came in for a new subdivision on this subject site, which is still current at this point. It was approved in 2005. That was Tract 5465. The applicant at that time was Gao Wu. And that subdivision actually had the seven residential lots located around the cul-de-sac extension on Virgo Court. They're a little slightly different than what we're seeing here on this site plan tonight with three split-level lots across the front there on Olson Road and then the balance, the two stories that would run on the south side of the Virgo Court extension. At the time when the applicant was coming in to subdivide that lot, they were utilizing an older topographic map that showed some 25 percent areas up there where lots eight and nine were located. And as a result, they did not approach those two lots for part of that subdivision. Currently, with this modification, I should say that after approval, the applicant at that time sold the property to the current applicant. And the current applicant went out and reshot the topography in the area with a location of the 25 percent slope line and also some, it shows some grading information, some fill areas up where eight and nine are being proposed. There were actually, there were some fill materials taken out of the existing development there on Virgo Court and moved up here as an off-site in the approach as far as to comply with the original grading concept for this tract area. So that's why that area is kind of padded out now as a result of that. It's kind of a brief summary as far as some of the history of the project site. The building designs, what the applicant is proposing are three different floor plans with three architectural styles for each of the floor plans. Proposing the split-level designs on lots one and four along Olson Road currently as the current approved project has designed for. They're proposing two, or three two-story designs on lots five, six, and seven. Also, the approved tentative tract that we have are currently, still has those, has two-story units also. And then for lots eight and nine, they're proposing two single-story designs up there. And the architectural styles of the three, or the units are proposed as country, French, craftsman, and colonial. And the house elevations are in compliance with the city's precise plan of design guidelines. And gratings for lots eight and nine will not encroach into the 25 percent terrain areas and will utilize areas previously graded on-site. This is a house design of the single-story unit. Got the side elevations and rear elevations also. Height of that structure is approximately 18 feet 8 inches. The staff has received several concerns from neighbors regarding the proposed lots eight and nine. And changes have been made to the project to address concerns that were received. The two lots, eight and nine, are now designed for single-story units. Again, 18 feet 8 inches is the proposed height. There's a six-foot high screen wall that will be located between lots eight and nine and the residential lots to the north and to CLU to the east to provide for privacy. And it's also conditions requiring landscaping on the slope areas between the screen walls and the property lines, both to the north and to the east, to soften the appearance of walls and provide additional privacy. The plottings of units eight and nine are at angles. It's shown as eight on the plan. It's actually an angled unit. We have conditions requiring some angles also for Lot 9. Again, to angle those to the existing houses to reduce the privacy impacts. And the lots on, the units actually on lots eight and nine are going to be located a minimum of 95 feet from the nearest residential lots or units to the north. Part of the environmental review, potentially significant environmental effects noted in, are noted in the initial study. And through incorporation of mitigation measures, these effects can be reduced to insignificant levels. And the applicant has agreed to mitigate measures in the MND as required by CEQA. The staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission is to approve Vesting Tentative Tract Map, Major Modification 2007 70142, and Hillside Plan Development, Major Modification 2007 70289, based on the findings and conditions detailed in the staff report. And before we complete our presentation, I just wanted to go over some of the changes that are addressed in the supplemental packet on conditions. Yeah, that sort of referred to the memorandum of February 25. There's a question from the audience.
Just so everyone knows, there's a copy of the public agenda and the entire staff reports are on the desk right at the entrance for anyone who's interested in looking at it.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Yes. First of all, we're adding additional conditions, findings, four and five, to the HPD major modification. These are mitigation, are conditions addressing from the MND that are also in the tract findings. We're carrying those over to the HPD findings also. Next is actually the modified condition number 55. And this change is required because the common driveway serving the two lots will be within Lot 9 and not in an HOA lot. Right now, it's, there's language in the condition requiring that the, excuse me, that the common driveway for eight and nine be located in an HOA lot or HOA easement. We historically have not done that in the past and we're recommending that that condition be modified to take out that language. We're also modifying condition number 116. And this modification actually clarifies that the screen wall on the west side of the project is at the top of the slope and not along the property boundary. These are along the properties that are facing on, are the existing homes off of thunder, thunder cloud, thunder cloud? Yes, on the west side of the project site. And the wrought iron fence is proposed along the eastern property boundary at Lot 9 in lieu of the screen wall, as the screen wall is required at the top of the slope per Lot 119. So there will be the screen wall on Lot, excuse me, on Lot 9 that will be strategically placed on the top of the pad area itself versus down the slope, at the bottom of the slope area. But the wrought iron fence at the bottom of the slope there, this is between Lot 9 and CLU property, will provide a clear definition between the property and CLU's property. It'll also provide for light and air to come through, help the vegetation landscaping in that area. We're also modifying condition 119. And this change clarifies that the decorative six-foot-high screen wall at the top of the slope of lots eight and nine extend along the eastern side of the pad for Lot 9 to provide privacy between this lot and CLU. This modification also requires that the perimeter screen wall be set back a minimum of three feet from the retaining wall on the east side of the Lot 9. And the separation area be landscaped and irrigated, as typically done in stepped-wall design. Reason we're out looking for the stepped-wall situation is that retaining wall has a maximum height of five feet. So if it was placed on top of the retaining wall, you could have a potential height of 11 feet of a wall section through there. So that's why they request, or requirement for the stepped-wall. Modification is also proposed for condition number 122. And this change requires that the HOA to maintain the landscape slope on the north side of lots eight and nine. And the slope area is within Lot 9 and clarifies that slope landscaping be provided between Lot 9 and CLU to the east. Again, the purpose of this landscaping is to soften the appearance of the wall, the screen wall, along the properties. And we're proposing a new condition to require that the owner of Lot 9 to provide access easements over the common driveway to the owner of Lot 8. Again, because the access driveway is actually on Lot 8, or Lot 9, and Lot 8 will need to have access easements over that. So we have that as a clear, cleanup item. And with that, I believe Mr. Town has a couple of other comments to make.
Just briefly, there's also a memo from the Public Works Department with a proposed change to condition number 30. That's on the next page in your supplemental packet regarding Olson Road Sidewalk, Curbin Gutter. And then also a second new condition related to acquisition of permission for any off-site construction that may be required from Lot 9 onto adjacent CLU property to the east.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, clarification. On one hand, you're recommending, well, I guess you're giving us two recommendations, one that involves Lot 8 and 9 and the other that does not include those two lots. Is that correct?
No, actually, the recommendation is for the approval of both modifications that are before you tonight. The key element here is the issues that seem to raise the most concerns that we've received comments on are with the lots eight and nine. There are also some modifications that are made in the design of the seven other residential lots down off of the extension of Virgo Court. So the modification actually covers all, the entire tract boundary area. Would point out that the lots, the seven lots along Olson Road sections, for clarity, actually are a superior design than what we have approved today, actually on that site through a redesign of the Virgo Court extension. One particular improvement is that the lots on the front Virgo Court will now have access sewers into Virgo Court, while before, on the current design, there's an easement that is actually runs behind those lots along the Olson Road that they would sewer into and then connect into Olson Road. So that's one improvement. There's also, because of the grade differentials, the grading actually is less severe down in that area than currently proposed.
Okay. And just clarification on page 10 and 11 of our packet. Under item number four, talks about the precise plan of design guidelines. New dwellings as well as alterations and additions to existing dwellings should respect and enhance neighborhood compatibility. You go down a couple sentences. Staff believes that these new lots will not necessarily be incompatible with the existing houses because of the setbacks. Going on to page 11, the design for lots eight and nine is unusual in that it locates a driveway in the proximity to the rear yards. I guess what I'm looking from staff is, on one hand, you are recommending, but we've got, you know, verbiage that says "not necessarily," "incompatible," "unusual." I don't know if you can provide any clarity for me, you know? Is it one way or another? Or did you, did staff struggle with this particular projects with lots eight and nine?
Well, again, the project, as far as looking at the terrain considerations that we look at when we review projects, from a physical standpoint, the things we normally look for as far as, you know, encroachments into 25 percent, the setbacks, the lot sizes, the densities and so forth. The design with the nine residential lots meet all those requirements of the HPD zone, being no encroachments into 25 percent, other than that pocket that's actually down along the Olson Road section that was approved previously in that consideration. Olson Road section that was approved previously, in that consideration. The thing we do look at, though, in the precise plan of design, is again, is the impact of development with existing developments in the area as far as for compatibility. Certainly, having driveways run behind existing lots are somewhat rare in the community. There are a couple of locations, and we actually cited one in the staff report on a development that was approved in the, I believe it was in the late 80s, early 90s, actually, off the 23 freeway, where there's a driveway that runs, that serves three lots behind, four lots in that area. So it has been done previously. Generally, it's not designed in such ways, but there's a little bit of precedence on that, certainly. In looking at the review, staff took a very hard look at the designs and the issues on the projects to see if, if all the physical constraints would be met, which they have. In our direction, as far as our recommendation in the staff report, we're looking at, you know, recommending approval. However, through the review of the hearing tonight, if the commission determines that the two lots should not be approved, our recommendation would be that it be approved in part, the approval approved in part to approve the seven lots down off Olson Road, because the designs of the tract adjustments on that layout is better than what we have currently approved.
Okay, and one last question. So for all lots 1 through 9, they do meet all the city standards and codes, and they aren't requesting any waivers?
There's no deviations on this project, other than, well, deviations that were approved in 2005, such as that 25% encroachment, which is a pocket area through there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Shepherd. How are you this evening? I do have some questions here. I want to get the chronology here straight in my mind. So back in 1990, both tracts were approved, but only Virgo was built, right?
That's correct.
And then in 2005, the Planning Commission did approve lots 1 through 7, but not 8 and 9. In fact, 8 and 9 were designated on the tract map. I think 8 was a fuel mod lot, and 9 was designated as open space. Is that correct?
Yes, in 2005, the seven lots along Olson Road were approved as part of the designation. Lot 8 was a fuel modification lot that ran across the, behind the lots on Virgo Court, actually on the south side there.
Okay. And so, so now the new applicant comes along and wants us to overturn that tract map as far as 8 and 9 goes, because of the fill that was thrown up from Virgo behind Virgo Court has now flattened out the 25% slope, correct?
That's partially correct. There's actually, with the topography that was shot, the 25% slope line appears differently than what was looked at back in 1990, more accuracy as far as it goes. It includes the fill areas that were part of that, the original tract designs when both, or the one was developed out in that area, but actually, the 25% slope line, in consideration of the layouts of these lots, was actually further to the south in some of the fill areas that came in.
Yeah, I got the impression from the staff report that it was, I mean, there's no actually, you know, no shift in the land. It was actually the fill that was thrown up there that flattened out the 25% slope.
The fill area did flatten out areas that were shown, however, the 25% slope line was in that close proximity, but most of the 25% slope areas were actually outside of where that fill area came in. So it actually flattened out some areas that were less than 25%, but certainly were sloping at that point.
So it was a combination, then?
Yes.
The fill and a reshot of the area?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Excuse me, Mr. Town wanted to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to correct one statement that was made with regard to the chronology. The original 1990 map included all seven lots that are, or all nine lots that are under consideration this evening. The seven near Olson Road and the two where lots eight and nine are currently proposed. In 2005, the map that is, that was approved and is currently active was only proposed for the seven lots near Olson Road, not for the two. So we're not overturning that, per se. What's being proposed tonight is the proposed addition, in a sense, back into the design of those two original lots that were approved back in 1990. So you went from nine lots to seven, now the proposal is to go back to nine.
I understand that, but we, that would invalidate the current tract map that we have now in the case, wouldn't it?
This is a major modification to the existing tract map. So this would modify the existing map. If this were not approved, the current map for the seven lots near Olson Road is perfectly valid.
Modified, and that's probably a better word than invalidate. Okay, thanks. Let me just ask you a question on that fuel mod area that's proposed between eight, nine, and six, I believe it is. That'll be 100 feet wide, correct?
Fuel modification zones are taken 100 feet from buildable pad areas. So initially, they would be from lots 6, 8, and 9, as far as the 100-foot distance.
Okay. Is, will that encroach into the 25% slope?
Parts of it will.
Parts of it will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Were you able to calculate the floor area ratio for eight and nine versus the existing Virgo homes and the proposed 1 through 7?
Yes, even though generally, when we look at floor area ratios, we're looking at ratios set up in lots that are in common zoning boundaries. Would point out that the Virgo Court homes are in an RPD zone, while this project site is actually an HPD, a Hillside Plan Design Area, and densities and parcel sizes and areas that remain undisturbed are different in the HPD than the RPD zone. The, we went ahead and ran an FAR for the two lots 8 and 9, and found that the Lot 9 would be at approximately 11% lot coverage, or total lot coverage, because again, these are single-story homes versus two-story, and Lot 8 would be 6%. The Virgo Court lots immediately adjacent to the building areas for eight and nine were running around 21%. That's with both, you know, both first and second floor added in there, would be about 21%. Now, if you deduct the area for the fuel modification area, they're getting pretty close as far as to that, I would ask, probably around closer to 15, 18% for those lots versus the 11%. So they could get pretty close to that.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, let's see if I can get this right. Since, since we're in an HPD zone, a minimum of 70% of that area would need to be set aside for open space. And Lot 10 is the open space, and according to the calculations, that's about 76%. So we're over the 70% minimum.
There, yeah, the, the, open, so undisturbed area does exceed the minimum amount for the HPD zone.
Okay.
Just to point out again, for clarification, that the undisturbed areas include open space, recreational areas, and actually can involve brush clearance areas that are outside of the, or fuel mod areas that are outside of graded pad. It's really areas that are graded, is the, where that calculation comes in.
All right. Well, my question was, the seven tenths of an acre that we're going to lose if eight and nine go up, is that calculated in that percentage? In other words, Lot 10 is roughly 15 acres, that's 76%, but we're going to lose close to an acre if eight and nine goes in, does that bring the percentage of dedicated open space down below the 70%?
Just a second here. I think that the...
It's a math question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We're definitely going to lose seven tenths of an acre if eight and nine are built, and I'm just wondering if you factored that into your calculation, that's all.
Actually, the, let me pull that exhibit out here, because it's actually...
Because if it wasn't, then I think we're close to being below the 70%.
Yeah, it's actually the 15.17 acres is what Lot 10 would be with eight and nine developed. It's what is left in that area.
Okay.
So that would actually be the 70, 76%.
All right.
That's not the...
What I heard you say is that if eight and nine are developed, then we'd be at 76%. So I presume the seven tenths loss of acre is factored into that number.
Excuse me, Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Town has done some calculations.
I did some, some quick calculations, and if you include that, that fact that the seven tenths of an acre would be lost, it would go down to 72%. Still be over the 70% minimum, so that should answer your question.
That's, that's what I wanted to know. I, I mean, I knew we were, if the seven tenths are factored in, I figured we were getting pretty close to the 70, and I wasn't sure if we were above or beyond it, above or below it. But, thanks, Mr. Town, so that's 72%. All right, good. California Lutheran wrote a letter in, and, let's see if I can get that letter here. And on the last page of the letter, they asked that if eight and nine were built, could some conditions be applied? And by the staff report, some of the conditions are being met. I'm curious, what, what about conditions 1 and 2, where they asked that eight and nine be titled for notification to the landowners that they're purchasing property next to Calhoun, and number two says that there be a full and complete disclosure regarding the university's current plans? I don't think that's in the conditions. Is, is that conditionable?
Actually, I can answer that question.
Oh, okay.
It's more of a legal, it's more of a legal question.
You're right.
With respect to what needs to be disclosed, that's regulated by the Department of Real Estate, DRE, and the city does not impose conditions on what has to be disclosed to potential buyers. That's truly an issue between the property owners. If a resident buys a piece of property and believes that there was inadequate disclosure, the remedies are to, you know, you know, litigate against the realtor who sold the house, the developer who built the house for nondisclosure, or what have you. But the city does not put disclosure provisions in there, because that's really getting in the middle of property issues.
Oh, very good, I appreciate that. So then it's nothing the city could condition or enforce, or, okay, got it.
Well, we don't do it. We just don't do that.
I understand. Thanks. And, okay, just a quick change of topic here. In the MND on page 6, on page 6, wait a minute, do I have that right? Yeah, yeah, on page 6, it, it talks about the visibility of eight and nine from Olson Road. And I think it says, if I remember correctly, that for all intents and purposes, that eight and nine would not be visible from the road.
That is correct, in the current, um, single-story elevation.
Right, at the top, as can be seen, these lots will not be visible from Olson Road, because they were blocked by existing structures, topography. But if you go to View F in there, at the back of the MND, View F, showing location eight and nine as you're coming up Olson? It looks to me that, I mean, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, but it looks to me that it could, it would be visible.
It's quite likely that part of Lot 9 will be visible, although we're going to have, as you know, a six-foot wall, which will actually limit the visibility and landscaping, that will probably limit it entirely from that site.
Okay. Well, it just threw me off, because it said will not be visible, and then you go to View F, and it is visible.
This is kind of an oblique view as well. I think we were talking directly across.
Well, and wouldn't the visibility be more visible, for lack of a better word? Wouldn't you throw in the, you know, the, the fuel mod area and the driveway and the wall?
The driveway should not be visible at all because of the six-foot wall.
Hmm. No, I'm talking about from Olson Road.
Yes, that's correct. You will see a six-foot, a six-foot wall. There will be landscaping, though, in front of the six-foot wall.
Please, could we not have comments from the audience?
All right, okay. Yeah, you know, these, I mean, these are depictions, you know? They're just, they're depictions.
Exactly.
They're the best we can come up with, and it just looks to me that it's a potential there from View F that there be visibility.
Well, Lot 9 is definitely marginal, but I think with the six-foot wall and the landscaping, it will not be visible at that point.
Okay.
Can I just augment one area as far as the fuel modification? Again, we're looking at fuel modification versus brush clearance in that area. Fuel mod takes selected materials as far as, looking at fuel sources and so forth. So it's not just a complete removal of vegetation, it is a selective removal of vegetation and augmenting of vegetation and irrigation systems through there to keep the area growing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I appreciate that. It's versus the scraped bear approach. It's the more modern approach, yeah. On the wildlife corridor, on the western side, do I got that right? Western?
Yes.
Western side.
That's correct.
So we generally like a wildlife corridor to be, to be 100 feet wide, and the residents say they've seen recently a mountain lion crossing Olson, and in the staff reports it talks about deer and coyotes and potentially mountain lions, but... So on this, what's been presented to us, the wildlife corridor is going to be one quarter of that, 25 feet wide. So if the standard is 100 feet, why are we settling for 25?
Well, it's basically because of the, the size of the, of the site itself. There really is no place they could, they could accommodate 100 feet. The reports of mountain lions are, to my knowledge, quite a long time ago. I don't think there's any recent reports. The idea was that this would provide an access for wildlife in the event of a fire or something of that nature to get back and forth. It's, it's obviously not the best situation, but I don't, I think it's the only thing we can do in this case, and we did want to have a corridor. Ideally, it would be 100 feet, but that would take the whole, the whole lot, basically, the whole...
The only way to widen it, then, you'd have to make the backyards of those houses shrink.
It would basically eliminate the project.
Oh?
100 feet is, is pretty wide.
Well, maybe not necessarily 100 feet, to widen it to 50.
Well, again, that's, that's still not the recommended size. 100 feet is the recommended size. We, our idea here was to do whatever we could to accommodate wildlife.
Yeah, okay. All righty. I just have one more question, one, maybe two at the most. The connector driveway that's going to be coming from, you know, feeding eight and nine into the cul-de-sac, the Virgo Court?
Yes.
That, I think it's 50 feet long and 20 feet wide, right?
It's 20 feet wide, it's actually over 50 feet, that whole section.
I forget the total length. In the HPD, in the Hillside Plan Development Code, it says that there'll be clearance, brush clearance on 20 feet of each side of a roadway. So does that apply to that driveway? Does it have to be brush clearance? So we got a 20-foot wide driveway, do you have to have brush clearance 20 foot on either side of it? So basically, you got a 60-foot wide situation going on, according to the HPD?
On the 20-foot, actually, that section along the north area, because you've got developments on the south, or the north side. North side, you got the, yeah, you got the developments on the north side on that. So the need for, as far as for brush clearance doesn't come into play at that point. It's in the HPD area in relationship to open space areas adjacent to streets. So again, what we're looking for is a fuel mod, in this case, a 20-foot section through there. If you look at the map, the design for the brush clearance areas, it act, or fuel modification zones, that area is actually incorporated into where that driveway would come through. So that would be looked at as part of the HPD area, would be maintained through, in this case, as we're looking at the HOA lot across there, then the HOA will maintain that fuel modification consideration through there.
Oh, I, oh, I see. Oh, so in other words, fuel mod from behind eight, nine, and six will also encompass this area that will run along that driveway?
Yes, currently is designed, that fuel mod section is, is included in Lot 8. Lot 8 is a very large lot that runs along that, uh, that parallels that section of the, the driveway through there. The idea is that the land area beyond the, um, the graded slopes or directly not in, um, the, the lot area, the usable lot areas per se would fall into the HOA lot.
I got it, okay.
And that includes the manufactured slope for the construction of that, uh, that driveway through there.
Got it. And just, I, I, one thing, it's, it's a hypothetical. You love the hypotheticals. Anyway, it goes back to that 70% of this site needs to be preserved as open space under the HPD zone? If, let's suppo, well, okay. Let's suppose that the area behind eight and nine was not partially artificially altered by fill that was thrown up from Virgo. Would, and it just was natural, would this, would, would there have been enough of a 25% slope there to meet that 70% site requirement? And that's hypothet, I don't, you're probably not going to be, that's a tough question. Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I think Mr. Town has a comment about that.
Yeah, I can review that very quickly. When we talk about these percentages right now, just to be clear with everybody, the open space lot is 15.17 acres, and that open space lot alone encompasses 76% of the entire property. That does not include the fuel modification area. And as Mr. Shepherd mentioned before, in the HPD zone, the definition of open space is actually broader than our traditional natural open space definition. It is any area that's not cut or filled, anything that's not manufactured slope, and could even include residential, uh, recreation. So, we're talking about a relatively high percentage currently, which would even be probably up in the 80% range. If theoretically, uh, eight and nine did not go forward, just your open space, if we just talk about that, would go up to about 80%. The open space lot, excluding the fuel modification area. So, we're really not in any danger of getting close to that 70% because what I'm talking about is, is only the natural open space. And in fact, the, the, uh, total open space per the HPD guideline of 70% even includes fuel modification areas, which would drive that number up further.
Okay. Oh, that, oh, that clarifies it for me. I, I do understand what you're saying. I think the seven, the loss of the seven tenths of an acre does drive the percentage down, but the hypothetical of the fill versus the natural is irrelevant to the calculation.
And the figure that I quoted earlier, that's if we took even another seven tenths of an acre out of the 15.17, that's what would drop it down to 72%. But in fact, if, uh, that's not being proposed, that's, that's not on the table tonight. One other, just clarification to a comment that Mr. Shepherd made in terms of the, uh, and that you requested a, a response to, Mr. Adam, is that the wildlife corridor on the west side of the project is currently 25 feet wide. In the current tract design, that's not being proposed, it's not being widened or narrowed, that's already part of the approved tract map.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. Shepherd, I just have, uh, one question. Can you tell me what the fencing material is behind the homes on Virgo Court?
The fencing material on, behind Virgo Court, uh, is actually a tubular steel, uh, material. Um, we often call it wrought iron across there, but most developers put in a tubular steel to, what it is, is a, it's an open picket metal fence across there.
Okay, so those homeowners-
This is at the top of the slopes.
Those homeowners then will see this new block wall behind there that's landscaped.
Yes.
How, if the HOA is to maintain that landscaped area, how will they know? Because they won't really be able to see on the other side of this new wall. So it would have to be those, probably those homeowners that would say, "Hey, something needs to be done to this property."
Well, um, it's a good point, actually. Um, either through, uh, and every, or, regular maintenance of the area, a regular maintenance schedule could be established as far as to check not only this area between the wall and the existing wrought, uh, tubular steel fence, um, on the properties, but also for brush clearance areas or fuel modification for the, um, the actual HOA lot itself. Um, probably the best approach would be setting up a regular maintenance schedule through that area, um, several times a year as far as to check on the, the growth and the irrigation heads and so forth. But under special consideration, you know, uh, if a head blows out or something, most likely it would be reported by someone who actually sees it, probably one of the homeowners down on Virgo Court.
Could that actually be conditioned? That there be a regular-
Yes.
-viewing of the property or something so that, uh-
We can modify the, the condition as far as establishing for the, uh, the maintenance of that, uh, landscape area to require regular maintenance in the area, regular checks, uh, vis-à-vis, you know, every month, every two months, whatever the termination is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, then at this time, I will, um, start the speakers' cards, and we have, um, cards, so there's one, two, three, four. So each speaker will have four minutes, the main speaker will have 15 minutes, and then of course there will be rebuttal time of five minutes at the end of the hearing. So the, uh, main speaker for the applicant is Mr. Tom Cohen. Would you please come forward, state your name and your city of residence?
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners, my name is Tom Cohen. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Morningstar Development, Inc. Also with us, with us this evening for questions is Norm and Robert Kutsch, the development managers of the project, and the project architect, Mr. Miller. Thought our civil engineer would be here tonight to help respond to questions as it relates to civil engineering needs and grading and the like, but I'm not sure he's in the audience. First of all, we'd like to, uh, thank staff for the tireless work on the, uh, on the project review and the preparation of the mitigated negative declaration. The staff report before you tonight, we believe is, is thorough in detail, is complete and well-written. There are a couple of things that we want to cover concerning the conditions, we'll talk about in a little bit, uh, but on the whole, we're satisfied with the conditions as suggested by staff as well as those in the supplemental packet. Uh, you have also in the supplemental packet our letter, which outlines the project's history, which you've heard already from staff, our outreach efforts to the neighbors, and what we see are the benefits that this project will provide to the community. Our project is an infill development. This site has been slated for development since the adoption of the general plan. Under the general plan and the zoning of the property, this site's maximum density yield is 16 units, and we're proposing nine single-family dwelling units. Uh, that's far below what we're permitted. We know that there's general consensus that seven units are acceptable to the neighbors. Uh, the two lots, eight and nine, uh, are what have created the concern. We first introduced this project to the neighbors in October of 2006, and the reception we received was, was chilly, quite frankly, and we were criticized for reintroducing these lots to this proposed location. The critical concerns raised were privacy and view loss. So we went back to the drawing board and evaluated the project and came up with some solutions, and I believe the changes that were made are significant. As noted by staff, the homes were reduced from two to one-story, and I'm talking about lots eight and nine now. A six-foot tall solid masonry wall was added to the top of the slope along the driveway serving the two lots, which create a visual and noise barrier for the lots below. There's an exhibit that we can share with you that, that shows you how that works. We're adding mature landscaping, uh, in front of the wall on the slope facing the neighbors to soften the aesthetics of the wall and add additional, uh, privacy protection. In addition, the driveway was lowered so that it would not be visible to the neighbors, and lots eight, uh, Lot 8's home was re-angled, uh, or was angled, excuse me, so that the views from the backyards could be enhanced to the, to the, to the slope, to the hill behind it. We've got two homes that are directly below the homes on lots eight and nine, or, excuse me, that are above, pardon me, two homes that are directly below, uh, the homes that are located on lots eight and nine. We've talked to the, to the owners, and the owner of the home on the eastern edge has indicated that does not oppose, uh, the home on Lot 8 or 9. The, in addition, we increased the separation between the proposed homes on lots 8 and 9 and the Virgo Court homes. Last week, we met with Cal Lutheran's representatives in the facilities department to discuss their concerns, and we do understand their concerns are about bringing a residential use in closer proximity to the university, and they, they do not want to invite a problem when activities occur on the university's property. We've made adjustments that should reduce the university's concerns. The home on Lot 9, as you know, has been reduced to a single-story home, and we're accepting a condition that requires us to deed-restrict, uh, this, so, to ensure that it remains a single-story home. There can be any additions to it to, uh, create, uh, second-story elements. Uh, we're building a six-foot, uh, screen wall on the eastern boundary to screen views towards CLU, and we're aware of the, of the university's plans to construct the new dorm building and enlarging the parking lot to run adjacent to ours, uh, our project, as well as to, uh, the existing homes on Virgo Court. Uh, we're talking about, uh, the impact of one home here. And we will take care to properly disclose, uh, this to the buyers of Lot 9. We're required to do that, as your able assistant city attorney said, uh, through the DRE reporting requirements. So we, we, uh, know what our, what our responsibilities are to, uh, to do that. Uh, in addition, we will be adding landscaping on our property as an additional means of protecting the privacy interests. Lastly, we do not anticipate requiring access or permission to do off-site work on CLU's property as part of our construction. Uh, we will work with CLU to ensure that construction on Lot 9 will not interfere with their expansion plans. The decision to propose a nine-unit project was not made in a vacuum. The site has been, had been originally approved in 1990 for nine units by the planning commission, with lots eight, nine in roughly the same location as proposed in today's application. In 1995, when the Virgo Court tract was under construction, uh, which by the way was approved at the same meeting in 1990 as the nine-unit project, lots eight and nine were graded by the developer of the Virgo Court tract pursuant to properly issued, issued grading permit by the city. And we have an exhibit here to, to show you that. Thus, the buyers of the Virgo Court homes, homes could see that the area behind their homes was not in its natural state, as it was clear that two building pads were roughly graded. A visit to the site today reveals this as well, but I'm sure in 1995 it was more, even more clear. In 2005, the map we are now seeking to modify was processed using inaccurate topographic information. The topo map showed that lots eight and nine were untouched, and that grading in this area would be, uh, within 25% slope terrain, which the grading ordinance prohibits. This suggests to us that the 2005 applicant or owner did not know that the land where lots eight and nine were proposed was graded previously, and the reasons the owner chose not to subdivide into the, uh, lot configuration you see today. We've also, uh, included several other improvements from that 2005 approved map, which we've outlined in our letter. You can see that on page four in the first paragraph. The project's most significant contribution is the conveyance of the 15.17 acres of land to be dedicated as open, uh, permanent open space to the city. Uh, as you've heard, I know there's been discussion on this, but the amount, this amounts to 76% of the property that is the subject of the application, and we've exceeded the minimum requirements, uh, to preserve by, uh, 1.2 acres. Uh, the other benefit, uh, that you will see from that 2005 map approval is that the, there will be no export of dirt. This is going to be a balanced graded site, so there won't be any additional truck trips running through the neighborhoods on the city streets, uh, beyond the typical, uh, but it won't involve moving dirt. We've outlined other project benefits, starting on page five in our letter to you. Uh, we believe that our outreach efforts have resulted in, in an improved project, and staff's recommendation supports that. To just cover quickly, the, uh, the one condition that we're troubled by is condition number 123 that requires us to form a homeowners association. Uh, we did not have any common area proposed at this time, although staff is recommending that we put the fuel mod zones, uh, into a separate lot. We believe that the need for doing that is, is unnecessary because each lot owner will be obligated to take care of, uh, their property. We'll have CCNRs that'll deed-restrict this and require it, and the city will have the ability to enforce that. We think that a, a formation of a homeowners association for nine lots is onerous and, uh, difficult to achieve in such a small subdivision, and to my, I'm not aware of any other homeowners associations in that immediate area. So, uh, we, we'd like to see that condition changed, uh, or removed, actually. And I think it also affects condition number, uh, I think I mentioned it, 101. Uh, on that note, uh, we respectfully request that you approve the MND and the modifications to the tract map and the HPD, uh, prior approval. Let me just check my notes real quick to see if there's anything I can help respond to from earlier, uh, and the questions and answers back and forth between staff. The one thing I was going to add, and I think, uh, Mr. Town answered the question, is, is that the wildlife corridor was the, was it approved with on the prior map, and we don't propose any changes in that area. And I think in, in response to Chair Reynolds, we, we will be taking care to make sure that , uh, all landscape areas, if it's within a property owner's property, or if it's within an HOA's, uh, domain, and it will be taken care of on a regular basis. It would be in our best interest to make sure that happens. So, that's it. I don't have anything further, I'm prepared to respond to any questions, and if I'm unable to, uh, one of our talented, uh, consultants will be.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Uh, questions at the speaker, Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
You had mentioned that, um, it should have been obvious to the residents because of the grading up there above, you know, where eight and nine would potentially be, that, that there'd be houses there eventually. I think you said that in the middle of your remarks. Why do you think it wouldn't have been obvious to the person that owned it before Morningstar?
I'm not sure. The answer to that, I think the, the answer isn't looking at the exhibits and the maps that were provided, that it was, uh, for whatever reason, it was the least, path of least resistance for, for that applicant. Uh, I, I can't speak, uh, as to the mindset of that particular applicant, it's just, uh, if you go there and look at the property, you will see the condition.
No, it just struck me when you said it should have been obvious, and I would have assumed it would have been obvious to the guy who owned the property, but he, he just applied through, you know, for one through seven, but, I, I know, I'm not, I know you can't put yourself in his place exactly, but I'm just curious what your reaction would be to that. Thanks.
You bet.
Commissioner Len?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. Good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Good evening.
I'm looking at, uh, the letter in the supplemental packet that was, uh, provided to us this evening, and to use your words, and I'm paraphrasing reluctance in your outreach efforts, uh, with, uh, some of the homeowners, but there are four letters here, and I'm just, I, I need some clarification here. There's four different letters, Mr. Kutsch, I believe, if I'm not destroying his name, and I apologize if I am. On the top of these letters, it said, "Sent to five homeowners." I'm a, "Sent to five homeowners," is that, are these sample letters that were sent to homeowners?
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, now that answers, I think that that answers that. And you said that you mentioned, uh, that you had, uh, meetings with Calhoun last week.
That's correct.
Is there anybody here speaker-wise from Calhoun, or?
I would bet my bottom dollar that they are here.
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll wait for that. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
You bet.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And the next speaker- And the next speaker, Vic Dermijin. If you'd come forward and state your name and city of residence, please, and you have
My name is Vic Dermijin, and I'm a resident of Moore Park, formerly of Westlake Village in Thousand Oaks. I am in favor of this major modification of this map for several reasons that were stated by Mr. Cohen, so likewise, I'm not going to repeat those. But I do want to emphasize, the current map's flaws require that about roughly 825 truckloads of dirt be hauled away from the site. Had the, had Morningstar developers accepted the tentative map that they had, that we're looking at currently without the major modification, that would probably put tremendous stress on the current residents in terms of all the implications of the removal of the dirt from that area. The other issue that I want to bring up is that naturally, it's a great thing when COSCA is deeded 15-plus acres of open space that will be available to all the residents, including specifically the Virgo Court residents who are currently a part of this discussion tonight. Also, one other comment, if I may make that, and then I'll cap it, and that is that the catch basin that is currently on the current map, without a major modification, probably would have stayed there as a sore thumb and would have to have all kinds of mitigation to keep it from showing up on Olson as residents drove up and down Olson. This group of developers with their capable engineers has seen that flaw as well, and was able to mitigate that major problem as well. So I approve it for these reasons and other reasons that Mr. Cohen and the members of the planning department of the city of Thousand Oaks have already indicated approval of this major modification. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to staff? Commissioner Adam.
Hi, good evening, sir. So you're in favor of the entire project, one through nine?
Correct.
Just one through seven?
One through nine.
One through nine. And you're from Moore Park, did you say?
Yes, I am.
Do you have, is there, do you have a specific interest in this project?
I have a relationship with the developers and the managers of this project, yes.
What's that?
Well, I am a Realtor, and I have represented them in the past, and that's my relationship with them.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Russell. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Bill Russell. I live at 285 Virgo Court, Thousand Oaks. I've been busy scratching through things because we only got the final draft last Friday. And when you prepare something and come in the door, you find there's a supplement. I'm curious about how late you would have to be to get the most current information. That doesn't seem to be your problem, but it's a point of irritation with me. A couple of things I'd like to point out. Excuse the lack of eloquence in speaking, but on page eight, appendix B of the MND, the report states, "A Caterpillar D8K, D9, or equivalent bulldozer in good condition, equipped with a single shank variable pitch ripper, can penetrate and tear through rock with a compression wave velocity below about 7,000 feet per second. Additionally, quote, 'There remains a possibility that the use of a hoe ram may be required in some areas.'" What does that mean? Well, think seismic wave. That's another term for compression wave velocity. A Caterpillar D9 is 54 tons of equipment, one piece, 14-foot tall and 30 feet long, with a huge shank deep in the rock, sending out vibrations and shock waves capable of 7,000 feet per second. That seems to have been calculated as the density resistance of the Canaho volcanic, since it is mentioned by the developer in the report. That vibration is traveling at 1.3 miles per second. How long do you suppose it will take to travel 80 to 100 feet to some of the residences? I'm not implying it'll shake it down, but I speak from experience. The issue is not just vibration, but sound shock waves that we must endure if this is allowed to proceed in its present form. A hoe ram, also proposed by the developer, is a hydraulic hammer used in demolition excavation, typically attached to the front of an extremely large excavator or backhoe. We all remember the year-long, or year-plus episode right down the street with the unforgettable blue rock. Well, think of that as your house being next to it. I cringe at the thought of that. This could be heard and felt for blocks in all directions. During the past year, I oversaw the removal of a million cubic yards of Canaho volcanic, of a rock knoll on the southwest corner of Reed Road, and one 800 cubic yard knoll on the southeast corner of Sunset Valley Road and Reed Road. We used both of these types of equipment listed in this MND extensively. Neighbors 300 yards away stated the noise was incessant, the air filled with pounding sound waves, they experienced vibration, not to mention resultant dust. Now, we employ dust control, as I'm sure the contractor will, but it still exists. Dust is the least of my concerns. Evidently, the latest method for hiding the access drive is to build a block wall along the length of it. Had my neighbors wanted to buy homes next to a large blank wall, they would have done so. We've progressed to an impediment that not only impairs their view shed, which the report deemed unimportant compared to what a vehicle driver passing on Olson at 50 miles an hour needs to see. The wall also impairs free movement of air up and down the slope where prevailing breezes previously flowed. The expressed city concern for those prevailing breezes has now shifted to their availability for the proposed two new residences, eight and nine. This was just now mentioned in the supplement as using a wrought iron fence on the east end to assure airflow for plants. So it's necessary for the plants, but it's okay to cut it off for those residences. Again, a puzzlement to me.
Mr. Russell, will you wrap up your time as inspired?
Okay. It's over, or I guess?
Your time is over.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Jerry Nozick. Will you please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record? You have four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Nozick. I'm a resident on Virgo Court in Thousand Oaks. I'm here to oppose the building of homes on lots eight and nine for the proposed Morningstar development tract. I also agree with the comments of other residents of Virgo Court speaking in opposition. First, I'll make a brief comment specifically on the final MND, which we only received, and some general comments on the environmental impact on us residents. Most especially, I was concerned that mitigations and conditions for this development, including lots eight and nine, do not appear to be reflected in the tract 5465 map in the final MND. Specifically for lots eight and nine, there is no separate lot for a fuel modification zone, which I may have missed, no plan for grading and soil movement, new utility services shown, turnaround for fire trucks, plan for long-term maintenance of the wall and the landscape, and traffic consequences for trucks. Now, even if the recommendations made in the CDD memorandum are agreed upon by the developer, is there a mechanism to ensure that the future homeowners of lot eight and nine will respect those commitments? We will be living here for a long time, and we'll have to deal with privacy, safety, economic, and environmental issues after the developer is long gone. Now, the final MND is a broad compilation of environmental issues. It offers an opinion by its authors on the probable impacts of each one addressed. For us, the residents of Virgo Court, however, it does not adequately address our concerns about the impacts on our quality of life by the inclusion of homes on lots eight and nine. For example, the right of privacy and client enjoyment of our property. Now, along with our neighbors, we spend a great deal of time in our backyards. Accordingly, a great deal of time, effort, and money has been expended to create the sort of environment where our families can relax outdoor with our friends and families. We did not expect, when we purchased these homes more than 12 years ago, that vehicular traffic and people and parking lots would be at eye level with the second stories of our homes, or that the city would allow anyone to build a 500-foot-long, 20-foot-wide private drive to access two homes that should never be built because of the access problem. I asked the planning commission, would you approve this construction if you and your neighbors were in our situation? Also, during this construction, there's going to be extreme inconvenience. At Virgo Court, there's only one road for egress, Morningstar Avenue. In addition, we have limited availability of parking. The amount of construction traffic, in addition to normal resident, delivery, and visitor traffic, is expected to be exceptionally heavy, creating a very trying experience for everyone during the many months of construction. But at least it will be confined to the west side of Virgo Court for the originally approved seven homes. If lots eight and nine are approved for construction, the noise, the dust, traffic will be significantly worse, being extreme to the homes below the private drive during this time. There's virtually no place for construction workers to park, except in Virgo Court, since there's no parking allowed on Olson Road. As previously mentioned, parking availability is limited in our cul-de-sac and is needed by its residents and visitors. Then we have this no man's land between the brick wall and our tubular fence. We're very concerned about this space. It will be a natural place for ground squirrels and gophers and snakes to migrate. This is just a few feet away from our yards, and as our fence is consists of wrought iron, the bars will pose no barriers to them. Additionally, weeds grow exceptionally well in the soil and will soon overtake any landscape plants if not maintained. For these reasons, and for those of other opposition speakers, we strongly oppose the approval of homes for lots eight and nine. I have a petition signed by all of the residents of Virgo Court, formally indicating our collective opposition, which I would like to give to you.
Please, would you give it to the clerk, please? Questions of the speaker, Commissioner Adam?
Mr. Nozick, how are you? You bought your home 12 years ago?
Yes, in 1995.
Is that what I heard? When you bought the home, do you recollect what your impression of the land above it was, or what the future use might be of it?
Well, you know, the developer, which at the time said nobody would be building up there. And so we really didn't pay much attention to what it looked like back there. It was just open space and a hill, and you assume that nobody would be building in such a location, particularly when you don't have the backyards backing up to one another. And that's our biggest objection, that if you count the houses, that private drive is going to be about 500 feet long. That is a private drive that's unbelievable to me.
Thanks, Mr. Nozick.
Thank you. The next speaker is Valerie Crooks. Would you please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record?
Valerie Crooks, representing California Lutheran University, 60 West Olson Road. CLU finds itself in a very unusual position relative to this development. We are generally very supportive of development in our area, and we do not have an issue with the development of the seven lots to the west of the Virgo Court tract. We are, however, concerned about the addition of lots eight and nine to the proposed development. The house on lot nine will be closer to the CLU property line than the majority of the other houses that adjoin our property. We're concerned that, over the long term, both CLU and the city will have complaints from the residents of lot nine relative to the ongoing university operations, light, noise, et cetera. We have discovered that, the hard way, that, over the long term, the first owners of the houses have adequate disclosure. That disclosure tends to not get passed on to subsequent buyers. We believe that these future neighbor complaints could be alleviated by the elimination of lots eight and nine. It's very obvious that the seven-lot subdivision is a viable development in and of itself. We'd like to thank staff for their very helpful support in incorporating many of the proposed conditions that Cal Lutheran had on this development. We certainly appreciate all of their hard and diligent work on that. Couple of clarifications. The existing property line wall is actually a gray slumpstone wall. We would prefer to see that extended as gray slumpstone and not wrought iron. We feel that would provide additional screening. We have provided a six-foot-high screen wall adjacent to our proposed parking lot, and in between, we've landscaped between the existing property line wall and that wall. The landscaping seems to be growing fine, so in our opinion, there doesn't seem to be an issue with getting light and air to the plants in that sort of a situation. The other thing that we would like to see, if lots eight and nine are not eliminated from the plan, is that the house on lot nine be flipped, so that the bedrooms are on the west side, living spaces on the east side. We feel this would be another mitigation measure to avoid future complaints from the residents. And we would still like to see some disclosure condition placed on this development, just to ensure that subsequent owners are adequately informed of the university's master plan. Therefore, California Lutheran University respectfully requests that the planning commission consider deleting lots eight and nine from the proposed tentative tract map, and we do thank staff for their addition of the other conditions to the staff report and the conditions.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, good evening, Ms. Crooks. Is there a history of any kind of conflict with the present owners of Virgo and the university?
We did have some very good valid issues raised by them when we put the fill in the parking lot area, and we worked with them very closely to develop the mitigation measures, which consisted of the six-foot-high block wall and the landscaping, which were established at the time we put the fill in, well in advance of our upcoming Residence Hall construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Bill Smales. If you'd come forward and state your name and city of residence.
My name is Bill Smales. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks on Virgo Court. I'm the owner of 286 Virgo Court, and I want to state that my family is directly and negatively impacted by the proposal to build houses on lots eight to nine on the slope situated directly above our home. While staff has attempted to answer some of our initial questions, I have further reviewed the final MND and found several disturbing statements about the developments of lots eight and nine. The Gorian geotechnical report stated that borings were performed at four locations on the property. There was no map of the boring locations included in the MND that I was given. However, in addition to identifying Canaho volcanic bedrock at the site at depths ranging from 2 and 1/2 to 16 feet, they also found artificial fill four feet thick at one boring, and stated thicker sections may exist on the site and is not suitable for support of engineered fill or structures. They state that artificial fill, topsoil, polluvium, slope wash should be removed in the grading areas. So how would the necessary grading of lots eight and nine take place? Referring again to the Gorian report, they recommend a Caterpillar D9 for grading where Canaho volcanic needs to be broken or ripped. The danger to my home and family and to my four neighbor families extends beyond the dust, dirt, noise, air pollution that the D9 will generate. Even with the six-foot masonry wall separating my backyard from grading, it is only 52 feet from my back door, so I have grave concerns about an earth mover device bigger than my family room working on the slope above my house. The second glaring discrepancy is the estimate of soil movement. The Gorian report states the proposed site grading will generate more cut than fill. They estimate export of approximately 3,142 truck trips, using 14 cubic yard capacity. The draft MND estimates approximately 179 trips. The CDD memorandum states that, under current approved design, export would require 825. The next paragraph states that the proposed modified design, allowing for 15 percent shrinkage, requires no export. So two things puzzle me about these numbers. Why the wide variation? Is it 3,179, 800, or is not really an issue? Secondly, why does the 15 percent shrinkage factor get mentioned in only one estimate? The number of truck trips could drastically affect the traffic on Olson. Then there's the unusual design for lots eight and nine, because it locates a driveway across the rear yards of five houses. The staff stated it's somewhat similar to Hissop Court, where a driveway is found next to the rear yards of three houses. We drove there and found it not at all similar. The length of the driveway is less than 100 feet, not over 500. The width of the driveway is only 10 feet, not 20 feet. The driveway is The driveway is not shared by multiple residences. The block wall is the boundary to the properties, and so the wall and its landscape is maintained by each property owner. For myself, a resident of 286 Virgo Court, my wife and I will not and did not sign the construction acceptance letter if the project is approved to include homes on lots eight and nine. Therefore, we will hold, in using the words from the document, "The City of Thousand Oaks, its elected officials, officers, employees responsible for any and all damages, liability, claims, lawsuits, demands, judgments to our property or persons arising from the construction of this project." In conclusion, we could accept building of the seven residences off the west side of Morning Star, but strongly oppose the building of two additional homes on lots eight and nine on tract 4657.
Thank you. Questions, the speaker? Thank you very much. Raul Miranda, would you please come forward and state your name and city residence?
Hello, my name is Raul Miranda. I'm a homeowner on Virgo Court. First, I'd like to say that I have no issues with the building of homes on lots 1 through 7 in tract 5465, providing the exterior design is consistent with surrounding homes as required. Now, I've read the MND, which I realize appears to be one-sided in favor of the developer. Much of the documentation is inaccurate, and it ignores the true concerns of the residents on Virgo Court. One of the major concerns is the 5 to over 500-foot access road that would lead to lots eight and nine. The CDD memorandum dated February 25, 2008, section D, page 11, states that the developer deleted the approved fuel modification lot and instead proposed fuel modification zone be incorporated into the residential lots eight and nine. This is in contrast with the City of Thousand Oaks' historical requirement that fuel modification zone be a separate lot under the HOA responsibility and to ensure adequate uniform maintenance. But looking at the plan on house lot 8, there does not appear to be space for the 100-foot-wide fuel modification clearance zone from the edge of the building pad to the open space of the knoll unless grading or blasting of the current knoll occurs. This is a big concern to us, because in 1997, the open space hillside burned all the way down to the existing fuel modification lot. Yes, there already has been a brush fire in this specific area. Fire Department Conditions 55 and 59 on page 25 require that private driveways and required fire department turnarounds serving two or more lots be located in an HOA lot or easement. Turnaround areas shall not be used for parking and shall be kept free from all obstructions at all times. This requirement is also not met, and changes to the previously approved plan show that the developer plans to use the shared 20-foot-wide driveway in lots eight and nine as a fire department access road. Even more concerning is that two guest parking spaces that have been added to each lot and a hammerhead extension of the driveway are to be used as fire department turnarounds. As a veteran firefighter, it's been my experience that heavy fire apparatus cannot turn around on a private road as restrictive as the one proposed for lots eight and nine. This restricts emergency vehicle access to structure fires as well as brush fires in the wildland interface area. We also have concerns regarding the potential daily truck delivery, UPS, mail, trash, as well as personal vehicles, RVs, boats, et cetera, in that area. Not only will the homes on the south side of our cul-de-sac have a road going through their backyards, but the owners on the north side of the cul-de-sac will have a view of a road cutting through a scenic mountain. In closing, I urge the planning commission to not allow the development of homes on lot eight and nine. When the project is finished and the developer is gone, we will be living with the negative impact of the project for years. Please do not let the developer squeeze in homes where there is no room and is just not logical. Common sense tells you that, for the greater good, the two homes on lot eight and nine and the access road are not necessary and should not be built. I would also like to add that the city did not mail us the final MND until a few days ago prior to the meeting, which left us little time to prepare, as well as the addendum, which we had no idea of until we got here, and apparently, there's not enough to go around. We will also not be signing the construction acceptance letter, therefore, we also hold the City of Thousand Oaks, its elected officials, officers, and employees responsible for any and all future damages, liability, claims, lawsuits, demands, and judgments to our property or persons arising from the construction of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Miranda. And the last speaker is Mr. Don Huffman. If you come forward and state your name and city residence.
My name is Don Huffman. I live on Virgo Court in Thousand Oaks. My first comments have to do with the confusing review package. We had the draft report, the final mitigated negative declaration. It included public comments and clarifications and corrections to the draft. Although this package supersedes the draft, it incorporates the draft without any of these changes or corrections being put into it. So trying to follow it was very difficult, looking at the unmodified draft in the final package, looking at notes, corrections. Made it very difficult to come up with a coherent understanding of the plan. Then there was the handout tonight, and basically, I feel like I've been blindsided. I had no preparation, no chance to see that. And in fact, the one copy that was passed out when I asked for it, when I spoke up and said, "Where is it for the audience?", there were no more at that time out of the counter. So I don't know what that material is. I'm sorry. There were a number of clarifications and corrections in response to the public comments, but when compared to the failure of the staff to note any of these consistencies in their review, it causes me to doubt the thoroughness of the staff review. In light of these criticisms of the package distributor for review, I ask that the commissioners defer any decision until they have personally visited and inspected the Virgo Court neighborhood and the proposed lots eight and nine. Like the other speakers from Virgo Court, I have no opposition to lots 1 through 7 being constructed. The staff response to public comments in the final sometimes implies requirements and commitments that are not in this final MND. The planning commission website includes a case 6A, a staff report regarding this MND. It includes suggested conditions from many agencies, but there's nothing that shows that these suggestions have been incorporated in the plan and are binding on the project. Are these suggested conditions already accepted and binding on the project, or are they still open for discussion and negotiation? From the responses to the public comments, item 6, loss of views. "The city's viewshed analysis is limited to the effect the proposed developments will have on core areas of the city or scenic highways. Apparently, the city does not extend its concern and analysis beyond the civic center and the traffic driving by 50 miles an hour on Virgo to the static residents who must see and be seen by incompatible construction immediately adjacent to their property." Item 8, intrusion of excess light into existing residences. "Requiring downward illumination and shielding devices during initial construction may protect the Virgo homes, but how does this plan protect them from later changes made by future lot eight and nine owners?" Item Response 11, people are important. It was noted, with no effect on the analysis of this proposal. I find that very revealing. 12, rodent mitigation. "The city has a standard condition for an extermination service. The city should require the builder to notify all potentially affected residents of this requirement and their recourse." I would have liked to have known about this when University Village was being graded. 13, there are two points in that. Vehicles on the access road, it does not address parking, delivery trucks, trash pickup, et cetera, and the diesel exhaust of these large trucks emitted at the level of the bedroom windows of the southern Virgo Court homes. Grading impacts. Also, it requires the developer's contact number in case of complaints. We should be given the contact number for the city grading inspector, who ensures that all mitigation measures are accomplished in accord with the project conditions of approval. We should be given copies of all mitigation measures that are required by the project conditions of approval.
Mr. Huffman, your time is up, so would you wrap up then? We all have a copy of your statement and everything. Are there any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Huffman. I also wanted to state that we have 15 statement cards. Seven were in favor of the project, seven were opposed, and there was one card that was not marked one way or the other. At this time, we'll go back to staff, and staff will respond to the issues that were brought up, and then the commissioners will ask questions of staff. And so, the time for public input has ended, except the applicant does have the right of a five-minute rebuttal after the staff discussion. So, Mr. Shepherd?
Madam Chair, I think I'll attempt to respond first. There were a lot of concerns about the MND. First of all, I should point out that CEQA requires, California Environmental Quality Act requires that comments on MNDs be considered. The city goes way beyond that, and we actually respond to those comments and provide them back to the applicants. That's not required by CEQA, but it's something the city does, and that is why the document got to the residents so late. It's actually above and beyond the call of what is normally done. There was a concern about the fact that the city did not seem to consider the viewshed concerns of the residents as being particularly important. Our viewshed analysis, at least from an environmental standpoint, does deal simply with core areas of the city and scenic highways. Basically, if a project cannot be seen from a scenic highway or a core area of the city, environmentally, that is not considered then to have a significant impact. It can still have a site-specific impact, and that's what's going on in this case. We certainly didn't mean to imply that we had no concern about those issues. There was a concern about the fact that the MND did not, that actually, the tract map in the MND was not reflective of the conditions. Sometimes, these maps are actually done at an earlier stage, and they may not contain all of the information that is included in the conditions, but the conditions do carry. There is actually a standard condition for rodent control, and that is actually employed here, so we do have that condition on the project. The discrepancy in truck trips, the applicant is saying that there will be, actually, it'll be a balanced grading operation, but there's going to be 2,500 cubic yards of excess, and they're proposing that with 15% shrinkage, that will actually make it balanced. We were looking at the possibility, if it didn't shrink to that amount, how many truck trips that would take, but we are expecting it to be very close to balanced. I think that may be all of the issues I got from the discussion there, although I think Mr. Jim here has a few comments on the grading.
Jim Taylor from the Volleyworks Department. Yeah, Mr. Russell brought up a very interesting point about the shockwave propagation through Caneo volcanics. And as is indicated in the Gorian soils report in appendix B, there is a lot of variability in the density of those rocks. Ordinarily, if we're going to be expecting really hard Caneo blue, in this case, the one down the street that was mentioned, blasting was actually recommended for that side. However, when it was attempted, it was a disaster. The person who did the blasting really messed it up, and so, instead, we listened to six, eight, nine months of the tink, 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 while they tried to chip it away. Since the Gorian report doesn't recommend blasting in any fashion, it's my expectation that what it says here is that you'll be able to grade this through normal means. In other words, you'll be able to rip it possibly with smaller equipment than the D9. So I don't believe that that's going to be an eventuality that you need to be concerned about. Also, shockwave propagation is less intense when you're not sitting actually on the rock. In the case of the existing Virgo homes, those are sitting on consolidated sedimentary-type soil structures, and therefore, are not going to have immediate propagation of those noises from underneath. The expectation is that the noise propagates actually downward. I think that's it for me.
Okay. In reference to Mr. Cohen's discussion about condition number 123 and also condition 101 that pertains to the fuel modification zones, this is a small subdivision, depending on the vote tonight, either seven or nine residential lots. Again, historically, the direction the city has taken on these fuel modification zones are for the area outside the manufactured slope areas to the individual lots, that they'd be placed in a separate HOA lot for common maintenance requirements through there. Historically, in the past, we're going back at least 20 years ago, when this first came about, there was concern about the individual homeowners actually maintaining some of these areas in the higher reaches of the property as far as the terrain considerations, and that's why the direction went to establishing HOA lots for the maintenance of the fuel mod. It's not just the going in and doing required trimming and so forth, and fuel material removals at times, but also for maintenance of irrigation systems and so forth, that the replanted materials would survive off of. So it's quite a contribution as far as the need for the HOA to maintain these areas. We'd point out that recently, I hear it, I believe back in January, the Hum Car development was actually nine residential lots, and there was requirement there for a HOA maintained fuel modification zone also. So again, historically, the city has incorporated that, and that's what we're looking for in conditions 123 and 101, to ensure the maintenance of those areas in commonality. Other comments that were made tonight from the public, there was a, just for a clarification point, that was brought up, a concern was brought up by Mr. Russell. When staff was discussing the issue of airflow, light and air, and so forth, and the wall situations, the condition we were addressing was actually the condition of a potential double-wall situation along the eastern boundary of lot 9, between lot 9 and the CLU campus. If there is a solid wall placed on the project boundary line, plus a solid wall for screening along the top slope along that eastern boundary, the conditions would end up being anywhere from a three-to-five-foot strip of land between double walls, double solid walls. The concern as far as the light and air is a very tight area through there, wasn't implied as far as the concern for the larger slope areas of the existing homes on Virgo Court. It was very specific towards that eastern boundary of lot 9 and CLU. Also, there were some concerns raised as far as the fire district for the turnaround area that's proposed on the private drive section, the served lots eight and nine. I would point out that the fire district has looked at that design as far as the hammerhead design, and has approved that design and concept to meet their needs. Would point out that along with that, our standard conditions resolution calls for some specific driveway and parking considerations on these lots, where the driveways are over 50 feet. There is a requirement, standard requirement, that two guest parking spaces are provided for each lot with a driveway over 50 feet. On the plan, there are the two parking spaces identified for lot 8. They're not shown for lot 9. Of course, with standard conditions, should the two lots be approved, the designs when they come in, that will be a plan check item to make certain that those two additional parking spaces, guest parking spaces, are provided for lot 9. And then, there was also some discussion about, again, about the fuel modification requirements, you know, the conditions that are being proposed tonight as far as do require the installment of those fuel mod areas. of those fuel mod areas within HOA maintained lot areas. That would set up that common review in perpetuity beyond after the developer leaves as far as for maintenance of those fuel mod areas, but also the direction of placing the landscape areas of Lot 8 and 9 that are between the wall, the screen wall and the existing wrought iron fence into an easement area for HOA maintenance that would, again, assure the maintaining of that area through the HOA versus the individual property owners through there. And again, should the commission desire, we can modify, actually, one of the conditions. Condition number, it's actually in your supplemental packet, the, right here. Condition 122, which is on Page 2 of your supplemental packet. We can certainly add additional language at the end of that condition that requires regular, a regular maintenance schedule to be established in those areas. Again, it could be a maintenance for once a month to, once every other month, depending on the desire of the commission to ensure that those areas are looked at and maintained properly. And through the conditions, I believe that pretty much covers comments as far as from planning standpoint. While we went over the public works and the mitigation issues of the MND. Unless Mr. Town or Ms. Noonan have some other comments.
Yes, I believe they do, and Mr. Town will go first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to respond to a few comments that were made. One was the idea, if Lot 9 goes forward to flip the location of the bedrooms, that's something that staff wouldn't have any problem with crafting a condition to include, should that lot go forward to further avoid privacy, potential privacy conflicts with CLU property to the east. Secondly, in reference to a comment made by Mr. Smalls about the situation at Hissop Court, which staff cited in the staff report, the intent was to provide the closest example of this type of a design, and that was the closest that we could find. As we noted in the staff report, it is located, that driveway is located behind three lots. The separation between the existing houses and the proposed houses in both the current subject that we're discussing this evening and that situation is similar. But as was pointed out, the driveway length is different. One is shorter, one is longer. And staff recognizes that. But we did want to give the parties that are interested in this case at least something to look at to try to make a comparison in the field as to something that's already constructed. Also, a question was raised about the conditions that are recommended or suggested, as we mentioned in the staff report. All of the conditions that are included in this report, again, should this project go forward, wholly or in part, are fully applicable to the project, including the minor changes that we suggested in the supplemental packet this evening. So, all of those are certainly part of the project. And those were all of the comments that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Noonan?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit about what Mr. Burgess was talking about, since there was a little bit of confusion regarding what the draft MND means, what the final MND means, and all of the conditions of approval. It is very confusing, so I just wanted to briefly explain. When staff releases the draft MND, it goes through, it analyzes certain environmental impacts that could be. And they're very specific and discrete environmental impacts. They're not broad-based. There's only certain issues that an environmental document under CEQA is supposed, you're supposed to look at. You can't look at, for instance, economic impacts under CEQA and so forth. So, there are certain criteria that staff is supposed to look at in the environmental document. The draft MND is released for public review, and sometimes staff will receive comments on it. And as Mr. Burgess explained, if we receive comments under CEQA, cities are not required to respond to those comments. We're just required to consider them. Staff, however, believes that it's good practice, however, to respond to the comments that we receive from the public. So, staff actually does that. And in combination, by looking at the comments we receive from the public and other considerations with the developer, we might add conditions to modify the project. We might actually revise the environmental document. So, when you get a final MND, and I'm going to hold it up right here, it looks really big, but everything here is the MND. There's no changes. The only change is about 20 pages, which consist of what changes we are making to the environmental document, because you raised a good issue, or staff raised a good issue, or the developer wanted to make some particular changes. So, there's only about 20 pages that are different in the final MND compared to the MND. Now, how does that get applied to the project? It gets applied, actually, let me step back. The MND is not a document that is imposed on a project. It is strictly informational. All you get from the document, if the planning commission approves the MND, the planning commission is merely agreeing that it provides sufficient information under the California Environmental Equality Act. They, doesn't mean that they approve the project. It doesn't mean that they disapprove the project. It just means that they agree that the environmental information discussed in the document is adequate. But the difference, then, is how do you make sure that if there's mitigation measures that are recommended in the MND be applied to the project? And that's done in the conditions of approval. And one of the conditions, Condition Number 14, basically requires that before we issue any grading or building permit, that the applicant submit a written report demonstrating all mitigation measures imposed in this MND have been complied with. So, that's how all the mitigation measures in here are imposed on the project, even if they're not specifically set out in a condition of approval. Now, there's also other factors that you raised tonight, that the public has raised tonight that are not environmental considerations. And that's why the city has other criteria, such as their development standards and their general plan policies and goals and so forth. And so, you might have additional conditions that are imposed on a project that are not necessarily environmentally related, but they do have to have an effect on the project or are impacted by development regulations. And so, those are additional conditions of approval. So, when you get the final package, you will see that there are a lot of conditions that are not discussed in the MND, and that there are conditions in the MND that are not specifically set out in the conditions of approval. But at the end of the day, the developer has to comply with all of them. So, I hope that that sheds some clarification as to what the process is here. One other thing I did want to note, however, is that there was a question regarding contact information. Condition Number 38 requires the developer to hold a pre-grading meeting at least 10 days before any type of construction that takes place and provide notice to all the residents within, I think, a 300-foot distance. And during that meeting, the developer is required to give you contact information in case there are any concerns that you had during construction. So, I hope that clarified a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan.
Karen Reynolds, if I may, over here.
Yes, no.
Two additional points I wanted to bring up. One is staff has crafted a draft condition for the commission's consideration in consideration of Ms. Crooks's discussion from CLU about the bedroom situation as far as on the west side of the Lot 9. Should that be approved? The condition, just to read it into the record so that the applicant has an opportunity to comment about it also, would be a new condition titled, "Modification of Residential Unit on Lot 9", stating, "Prior to the issuance of building permits for Lot 9, the applicant shall submit revised building plans for the review and approval of the community development department that locates all bedrooms on the west side of the residence." That, and also, Ms. Crooks again raised the question about, what was that, actually, about the disclosure considerations. And again, our city attorney, Ms. Noonan, actually covered that earlier in the discussions of the hearing tonight.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments?
Nothing else here.
Okay, then we'll go back, and Commissioner, do you have any questions? Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Maybe this would be for Mr. Taylor. If I understood Mr. Smalls correctly, he's contending that the borings in the area where 8 and 9 are, would be, potentially be, where that fill is, suggested that that fill would not support the homes, and that somehow that fill would have to be removed. And then, I presume you might hit blue rock underneath of that? Did I understand him correctly? Is that correct?
Mr. Shepherd and Mr. Burgess are looking into that, and it's part of the soils report within the MND. My understanding from what that phraseology means is that the existing weathered surface of that previously graded area, which was shown on the previous grading plan, is no longer suitable for setting a building upon. After it's been weathered, after it's been eroded, it has to be basically removed and reconsolidated so that it's appropriate to support a structure. But we're trying to find out about this specifics, about this borings, 8 and 9, if you can hold for just a moment.
Going through the Gorian report, it looks like a lot of the borings were actually taken back in 2003, which actually predates the 2005 approval of the current tract that's there today.
Well, I was just going to say in addition, there are a number of borings that were taken in 12689, so those would be for the original project. And I'm sure those would have gone up on that section. I don't have the specific location of the borings in this report, though.
Well, how deep is that fill? Do you happen to know that?
We do have the grading plan.
We're going to open up the grading plan here, but then, there's a question. Actually, the applicant's engineer could probably provide some input. They want to refer back to that during the rebuttal period for the applicant.
Well, if I heard Mr. Taylor right, though, what he's saying is the fill that was placed up there is no longer adequate to support a house.
It would be required to be removed and recompacted, correct?
Okay, yeah, that's what I, so, all right. And then, Mr. Smalls' contention was basically correct, then. Okay, and just one, two other quick questions. How long is the driveway? I mean, I've heard different lengths, but I want to hear it conclusively from you.
Scaling out to the unit on Lot 8, which is the first house of about 380 feet, and then additional distance to a total distance of about just under 500 feet to the garage of Lot 9.
So, it's 500 feet?
500 feet would be.
Give or take a foot or two. Okay, thanks. And how wide is the driveway?
Initially starts out as a 20-foot driveway up to the, through the fire department turnaround area, which is at Lot 8. And then, the balance of the driveway to serve Lot 9 drops down 15 feet in width. So, it's a 20-footer until you get to Lot 8, and then it goes down, actually, 16 feet, excuse me. So, it's 16-foot for the balance.
Okay, so, it's 500 feet long, and the majority of it's 20 feet wide?
The majority would be 20 feet.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that driveway at the very beginning is steep, too, isn't it?
The initial elevation or percentage of slope is at 15%, which is the maximum driveway gradient for residential zone properties in the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions to staff? Okay, then, at this time, I'll call Mr. Tom Cohen back to the microphone. If you would state your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes rebuttal time.
Good evening, Tom Cohen, Thousand Oaks. To just quickly address the points that were raised and the suggested conditions drafted by staff, we're fine with the Cal Lutheran request to flip the floor plan. We don't have a problem with that. The question that just came up about the condition of the soils on lots 8 and 9, it's an over-excavation site. We're going to have to remove the dirt and recompact. So, typical with a site that's been weathered. There was a comment about whether or not there were parking stalls provided on Lot 9. There are two. Not sure if it's properly designated, but there is room for two. And I appreciate the comments from the Assistant City Attorney about the purpose of the MND. But the other point that I wanted to raise is that the proposed mitigation measures are, will be incorporated into the final approval, and the project will be required to comply. So, we will have to meet all the requirements as suggested by what's in the MND, as well as the conditions imposed by staff. So, the developer will be held to do what he's required to do. And I believe, I don't have anything further to add, so if there's any further questions, please ask away.
Okay, I have a question. Mr. Cohen, why are you opposed to the HOA?
It's somewhat philosophical, having been involved personally and professionally. The organization that goes into doing that for a small project is, it's overkill. There are nine homeowners that are going to be responsible for their own properties. The fuel mod zones are going to be within their own lots now. And it's about adjusting lines. That can be accommodated, and we'll do it. It's just, there's just a lot of regulatory, for lack of a better word, nonsense that you have to go through. So, that's my primary reason.
Okay, thank you for being honest about that. Any other questions, Mr. Cohen? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Was there a question about somebody else with the project? That, questions? Okay, fine. Thank you. Then, at this time, if there are no more questions to staff, I'll close the public hearing, and this is a time for discussion. Motion, Commissioner Fisher.
Yes, this is certainly a unique project, proposed project. On one hand, we're looking at a project that meets all the codes, city requirements, not requesting any waivers. There is a precedent set within the city of having a driveway behind a house, although it's, from what I can tell, one driveway. On the other hand, we've got the precise plan of design guidelines that state that new dwellings, as well as alterations and additions to existing dwellings, should respect and enhance the neighborhood compatibility. Looking at this project and being out at the site, as well as driving by the site numerous times, going to Cal Lutheran over the years, I don't think that Number 8 and 9 fit in. I don't think it's compatible. I don't think it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, either side of the neighborhood. It's just, it's kind of an odd addition, although I do respect the rights of property owners to build on it. We get into a little bit of subjectivity here, and my own personal feeling is I don't think 8 and 9 fits in with this. 1 through 7 looks great, and I think it has been improved from what it initially was. So I guess maybe I can head down with a motion and take it from there. I would like to make the motion that we approve in part TTMJ 2007-70142 and HPMJ 2007-70289, but require the deletion of lots 8 and 9 and modify conditions to be consistent with deletion of lots 8 and 9. And again, my finding is I do not believe that this fits in, lots 8 and 9 fit in with the precise plan of design guidelines. And approval of the final MND.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
I am enjoying Commissioner Fisher's comments, and will be supporting his motion. It's good to see that all of you have done your due diligence tonight to come out, and this is how government is supposed to work, is to listen in a public hearing format and to reasonably and factually present your opinions so all of us citizens who live here in the city with you can make an informed decision as to what to do with this project tonight. So with that, I will be supporting this motion.
Commissioner Adam?
Yeah, I, too, will support the motion, and I do feel compelled to tell you why, I mean specifically, because we need to back up what our judgments are. And I think there's some very specific reasons why 1 through 7 would be all right, but not 8 and 9. Resolution 2008, Commissioner Fisher brought it up, that these homes should be consistent with the elements that distinguish the particular neighborhood and neighborhood compatibility. I don't think they are. I think the unusual driveway design is not compatible. I think the homes are 3,700 square feet, and they're about 65% bigger than the ones below them. I don't think that's compatible. It says public view sheds should be respected and maintained. We've got two 3,700-square-foot houses. We've got a 6-foot wall. We've got a 500-foot driveway that's 20 feet wide. We've got 100-foot fuel modification area. I can certainly tell you that the residents are going to see it. And I personally believe that the motorist on Ossam Road, which is a scenic highway, will see it as well. I think View F indicates that. And I think the staff's being a little overly optimistic that it'll all be hidden. I don't think it will be. The conservation element calls this hill that you folks live on, they call it a prominent knoll, and it should be preserved. And it says to encourage the location of buildings on the flat land between the knolls and avoiding structures on conspicuous hilltops. So I think these two structures don't do that. They put two structures on a conspicuous hilltop. And I think the fuel modification area makes it even more conspicuous. So, and also, unbeknownst to me, but Mr. Smalls brought up a very good point. This grading is going to be more severe than I thought. I mean, if you're going to rip out all that fill that was put in that was supposed to hold these two houses and you're basically going to start over again, that, to me, is not encouraging. Scenic Highway Element states that, you know, "Proposed development and adjoining wall should be compatible with existing surroundings and enhance the scenic character." And I don't think that this 8 and 9 does that. And finally, well, there's also the Hillside Plan Development Zone, the HPD, calls for minimal grading. I don't think this is minimal grading. Calls to not have a staircase effect, you know, and I think we've got a staircase effect It also, well, we're on the borderline, if you ask me, about the 70% open space. We're going to preserve 72. It's close, but I wish it was not quite as close. And finally, the two things that move me the most, California Lutheran. They don't like the project, and I can't say I blame them. I mean, they've got a natural buffer there between the homes and the school, and I think they're absolutely right. In the future, people, things are going to be forgotten, and there's going to be complaints, you know? What is this 228-unit housing, or student residence hall right next to us? There's going to be privacy. There's going to be noise concerns and lights and et cetera. So I think Cal Lu brings up a good point, and we can't even enforce the conditions that they ask. We can't enforce the notification, and it all has to be done privately, so the city can't get into that. And finally, I mean, the biggest thing for me was the residents, the residents that live there. I mean, the impression was that this land was originally undeveloped, it was 25% slope. Now we're told that it isn't. The privacy, the lights, the driveway, the loss of the view, that all adds up to me to be unacceptable. And there was one thing in the MND that, you know, I know it's boilerplate, but it said that the view from Virgo Court, yes, would be disrupted. It's an unavoidable site-specific impact associated with new development. It's not to be considered a significant environmental impact. Now, I got to tell you, I'm sure the residents of Virgo Court do not agree with that statement. To me, the residents of Virgo Court have just as much say and just as much ability to live in this neighborhood as everybody else. And so I think that we need to consider that. I don't mean to get long-winded on it, but I think there's very specific reasons why 8 and 9 should not be approved, and it's not as subjective as you may think. So I will support, and to make it a long story short, I will support your motion, Commissioner Fisher, and thank you.
Thank you. And my comments are that I agree with my fellow colleagues. I really don't think that these two homes are compatible with the area. My biggest concern is the long driveway and the grade to start up the driveway, even though there'll be a 6-foot wall there. I really think that that'll be noisy. I was concerned, and I brought out that I didn't see the two parking spots for the house on Lot 9. I just, I just don't think that the houses on 8 and 9 belong there. And I'm really pleased with the audience and how they came down and how they spoke and respected everybody's comments tonight, and I think all of the commissioners appreciate that. So with those comments, and I will support the motion, if there's further comments to the maker of the motion, okay, then please vote.
Motion passed 4-0.
And there is a 10-day appeal period. And why don't we just take a three-minute break? Well, I'm sure the audience probably wants to go home, and then we'll continue with our meeting. We have a few things that we have to clean up. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, and we'll continue with the agenda. Item number seven is Miss Alena's items, reports and referrals, and there are none. Eight community development directors' reports and referrals. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Three items, just to mention in terms of cases, which you have heard and which are going to be heard by the City Council shortly. One is Westlake Park Center East, which is the zone change on Townsgate Road. That will be considered tomorrow evening by the City Council. And then the Humcar Project on Olson Road is scheduled to be heard by the City Council on March 4th. And the Lynn Rowan Medical Associates Project adjacent to LaFrobas Hospital is scheduled to be heard by the council on March 18th. In terms of upcoming hearings for the commission, we have a number of cases at our next two meetings, as indicated on page 47 of your packet. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Minutes of the February 11th, 2008 meeting. Is there a motion? Commissioner Lynn?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of February 11th, 2008.
Please vote.
Motion passed 4-0.
And AB 1234 report, Finney? Okay, continuing on to commission comments. Any commission comments? My goodness. Okay, then I will adjourn the meeting to 6:30 PM, March 10th, 2008. Good evening.[1703.35]